Regular meeting of the Raton City Commission to order. Can we have roll call, please, Desiree?
Sure. Mayor Sagata.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Chatterley.
Present.
Commissioner Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Present.
And Commissioner Honeyfield.
Do you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And thank everyone for showing up this evening. Couple of announcements. Our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, September 9th, 6 o'clock here in the chambers. All city offices will be closed Monday, September 1st in honor of Labor Day. Before I get to the proclamation, I'm going to see Mr. Misses. Is there any new employees? Chief Burke here? Nope. So, alright, we'll move into the proclamation. Proclamation recognizing Adela Garcia's retirement and years of service with the Raton Police Department. Proclamation honoring the retirement of Ms. Adela Garcia, August 26, 2025. Whereas the city of Raton proudly recognizes the dedicated public service of Ms. Adela Garcia, who has faithfully served the Raton Police Department for 16 years. And whereas during her tenure, Ms. Garcia exemplified excellence and perseverance by fulfilling the responsibilities of not one, but two vital positions. Records clerk and secretary, ensuring the smooth and efficient operation of the department. And whereas Ms. Garcia played a key role in the successful transition of the department's reporting responsibilities from the Uniform Crime Reporting System, UCR, to the National Incident-Based Reporting System, IBRS, a task requiring both technical expertise and steadfast attention to detail. And whereas through her dedication and tireless work ethic, she processed thousands of arrests and booking reports, oversaw background checks, maintained incident reports, and input critical data into national networks, thereby supporting law enforcement efforts and contributing to the safety of the citizens of Raton. And whereas beyond her professional contributions, Ms. Garcia has devoted her personal time to bringing to serving the community she loves, volunteering with the Lions Club, the City of Bethlehem, and the historic Schuler Theater, reflecting her deep commitment to civic service and the enrichment of Raton's cultural and community life. And whereas her professionalism, dedication, and service leave a lasting impact on the Raton Police Department, the City of Raton, and all who have had the privilege of working alongside her, now therefore do I, James Neil Sagata Jr., Mayor of the City of Raton, New Mexico, to hereby proclaim that we recognize and honor Ms. Adela Garcia on the occasion of her retirement with deep gratitude for her 16 years of faithful service, her many contributions to public safety and community life, and her lasting legacy of dedication and excellence. In witness whereof, I appear to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Raton to be affixed this 26th day of August, 2025. We thank you so much for your time, Mayor of the City, and all your service.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
Arriba, Dercy!
I'm going to go a little off script here. Chief, would you like to say a few words?
Adela's been awesome, awesome employee, totally dedicated to the police department. She only had to raise her voice a couple of times, so she's going to call this one in the department. She's going to be great.
Thank you. Thank you. Alrighty. Item five, commit reports from the commission. Commissioner Honeyfield. Commissioner Jacomo.
I have no report.
Commissioner Schuster.
Well, I forgot this was report night, but I'm going to count on Commissioner Chatterley for the water board report that was reaffirmed last week. And also on Wednesday, there was... I didn't get there in time to be there for the whole thing, but I... There was a meeting of the Rogers' Tax that I was able to catch the last bit. I'm guessing we'll talk about some of that later.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Okay, the water board met on August 19th. Lake Malloy's full filter plant production in July was 38.6 million gallons with a peak flow of 1.7 million gallons a day. We partially ran off the Simron system from Eagle Nest until we had radio issues again. So, still trying to fix that. Construction on the 3 million gallon tank started on August 11th. You might have heard sand, robotic sand blasting up in that neighborhood. They're going to do the sand blasting, and then they will prime it and do other modifications. And then they're going to paint the outside when they redo the interior. So that's been a really big project. We approved a resolution for upgrades at the Lake Malloy Dam, which we hope to get funded. That has to go through the Water Trust Board application process. We approved a resolution for excess funds from the 3 million gallon tank project to be used for other tanks that also needs to go back to the Water Trust Board to have that extra funding approved and get all our tanks re, I guess, repainted and upgraded a little. We approved a transfer of some funds to invest in a CD. We approved just the basic stuff, task orders, financials, and also discussed that with the rain, which we all love, our water usage is down a little, and so our budget could be affected moving forward. They're going to keep a close eye on it. We meet the monthly on the third Tuesday at 5:00 PM here in the commission chambers. Anyone is welcome to attend. I also attended the New Mexico, North Central New Mexico Economic Development District Executive Committee meetings on July 31st and August 5th. Shelley O'Neill from Philmont Scout Ranch was appointed to the board and is approved to go to the full board this Thursday. She will be the at-large member for Colfax County. And if you don't know Shelley, you're missing out because she's super awesome. We discussed policies and procedures and hiring for the executive director position. And that's why I was back down there on August 5th. We had a special meeting to interview for North Central's new executive director, and we offered the position to Santiago Chavez. Very excited to work with him. He has, comes with some great experience, particularly with tax and rev, financial background. And he's also an honorably served Army veteran. So very, very neat man. Excited to get to work with him, but we will miss Monica, who's been essential in everything. He started this week, but Monica will be transitioning with him for five weeks, and she will be finished September 30th. Our next meeting is, let's see, is this Thursday in Santa Fe. Starting at 10:00, we have executive, and then the afternoon is the full board. I've attended several meetings for the Raton Clayton Interchange Exit 451 Bridge Artwork Committee. This is going to be super exciting, and I'm so excited about this project. The artwork designs are now at 30%. We were able to award the project to a pair of these really neat lady artists. And then we had a gentleman who does a lot of monument signage and some other bridge design. And so we were allowed through DOT and our partners to have him. He's going to construct monument signs on the east-west, up on the top, for the 8764 with our branded logo and things. And then our north-south is going to be just some really incredible dynamic stuff. And I believe in October, they'll have a big public meeting, and everyone will get to see the plans and what's coming forth. But there is a big committee of people that have been involved in this, and it's just, it's really exciting. It's already exceeded my expectations. I didn't think we were going to have such a cool-looking bridge. And just to quell all the rumors, it is the tight diamond that they are working on it at. There are no roundabouts. So everyone got a little worried when that was out there.
With traffic lights.
With traffic lights. That's right, to keep everybody moving. I also had a meeting with the Nature Conservancy, and Brad Corey is here tonight to present to us and will give us an update regarding the Bartlet Mesa Ranch and the Buck Ridge Ranch. And then last night, several of us attended the public meeting with the Climax Canyon Trails. And they will be coming back in, let's see, they said they have a public meeting number two in early to mid Novem, or sorry, October. September conceptual planning, and then early to mid-October, public meeting number two. And they'll finally flag the trail. So this is just a design team that's working with us. It's not going to end up being construction. We'll have to go back for that process. So there was a lot of information last night, and I'm sure Claire Tien covered it as well. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, I do have a short report on the Secondary Education Committee meeting. And what we've come across is that, one, we have a lot of things going on in this community that do support students. However, we don't always have a good list of that. So one thing we're going to start with is creating that list of what is available to students as far as some internships and other supportive services that help students along their way, get them on their way to finding a good college and looking for the best career or tech support for technical college or training. And then trying to work from there of what we have. So we'll hopefully create an information center, more or less, where students can have that, you know, that expanded ideas of what's available. We can support them in going on to a better secondary training, whether it's technical training or higher education.
Anything else?
I think that's it.
Okay. As for myself, we did have an RPS meeting last night. It was not a real long meeting. We talked about the solar array and what it's done. Since it's come online, it's produced about 1.17% of the load for this last roughly 18 months. So not a lot, but it is helping. We talked about the 4G conversion. The crew has been demobilized. Whereas the possibility, we may look at them to help clear the easement of the Borough Canyon Line on the New Mexico side where we own. Got some pretty heavy forestation in spots, and want to try and get that addressed before the spring winds come and fire danger. So we're looking at that. Like the Mayor Pro Tim, I did attend the July 31st, New Mexico, North Central New Mexico Economic Development District meetings. Also, will be attending both meetings this Thursday. Did attend the Trails Public Hearing last night. And I'll be meeting in Santa Fe this week. And I just went blank.
Pecorice?
The pecorice, yes, the pecorice. Thank you. That will be meeting tomorrow with them. Yes, I went blank there for a minute. And that's all I have. Alrighty, item six. Items from citizens present. At this time, we will take comments from the general public. However, if you are here to speak on something that is in the agenda, please wait until that item comes up for discussion. So at this time, anyone wishing to address the commission may do so at this time. Please state your name and your business.
Sure. I'll be quick. It looks like we've got a busy meeting tonight. But I'm Tyler Davis with Engineering Analytics, and apologize that this is not a busy meeting, but just wanted to recognize that this will be the 10th year of Engineering Analytics operating here in Raton. So we're pretty excited about that and all the projects that we've had with the city. So we wanted to present this poster board to the City of Raton. I just got some photos of some of the projects we've done over the last decade. So we're excited for the growth and, you know, everything that's coming in Raton and excited to continue all the great work. So just wanted to thank you guys for keeping us busy for so long.
You bet. Thank you for all the work you've done for us. It's been a good partner.
Yeah, it's been a lot of fun. So thanks again.
More projects to come.
That's right.
Uh-huh, for sure. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll try to be quick. Randy Beetz, I'm the Vice President of Pro-Tone, and I just wanted to give a little update on things that we've been working on over the past couple nights. We've got our president here, Shane Young, back in the corner. So I too have been attending the North Central Economic Development District meetings on a regular basis. Attending the one this week on Thursday, August 28th. I attended the one last, last, last meeting on June 26th in Red River, and we toured the economic development projects that Red River is doing. Very interesting stuff. Let's see, we also reviewed and made, we reviewed adjustments to the member dues. Some communities will go up, some communities will go down, some will stay about the same. They renewed their WIN or Workforce Integration Network grant for another year. And let's see, I also attended their SEDS or Comprehensive Economic Development Steering Committee meeting. We will have, should have a report in October. Let's see, I've been attending the regular NITO meetings. We've been doing quarterly virtual meetings for the community. And the next one is coming up on September 27th. It's going to be over business retention and expansion. I've invited John Brown from the Dogwash to come and be a speaker at that. I need to follow up with him and see if he can be available. We have also applied for some funding and recertification for the Economic Development Organization certification through New Mexico. We have an onsite visit scheduled for September 30th. We're planning to do that in the morning, and I'm going to send out a more formal updated invite to all the stakeholders. We completed the ribbon cutting at the self-serve Dogwash on July 19th. And there are several businesses that we're in the process of reaching out to to plan ribbon cuttings for them, including River Rhythms, Beehive Homes of Raton, Crystal Pharmacy, and the new motorsports business on Clayton Road. I've been working with the Raton High School and Vermejo on creating an internship program with them. We're working on matching up the programs that the high school offers with the departments that Vermejo has, so we can do hospitality and trades internships there. Let's see, I also attended the trades education meeting on, here on August 14th, and the Resound Groundbreaking and the New Mexico Energy Affordability Working Group. That was a virtual meeting. They are taking surveys in our, in the southwest region. They are looking to create equity in energy through code. So trying to write code that is inclusive for everybody. And I volunteered to be on the quarterly meeting, so hopefully I'll learn more about that. To the end, I was at the Climax Canyon first public meeting last night. That's everything I've been doing.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll be moving on to the action items. Before we get started, we are going to move item Q up to behind C. So follow item C. Just for everyone's information. Item eight, deliberate and act on approval of August 12, 2025, regular meeting minutes. All have a chance to go through them. If there are no additions or corrections, they will stand approved as presented. Any questions? Any corrections? Hearing done. Minutes stand approved. Thank you. Item B, presentation, nature conservancy update on Bartlet Mesa Ranch acquisition and Buck Ridge Ranch. Mr. Minister.
Mayor and Commissioner, tonight we have a presentation from the Nature Conservancy regarding the recent Bartlet Mesa acquisition and ongoing conservation efforts at Buck Ridge Ranch. This presentation will provide details about the significance of these properties, including their ecological, cultural, and recreational value to the region. This acquisition strengthens regional conservational goals and preserves open space for future generations. Sir?
Thank you so much for inviting me to come and speak tonight. It's great to meet everybody. Thank you for coming out again. So my name is Brad Corey. I work for the Nature Conservancy, our Southern High Plains Initiative. So mostly grassland work, but this part of New Mexico has kind of quickly become my favorite. So what we're talking about, I'm the principal project manager for the work that the Nature Conservancy is doing just right over on Bartlet Mesa here. That started a couple of years ago. I'll get, I'll jump right into it. But so here is, here are a couple of maps. This is how my brain thinks, so bear with me. You're not the same. So we can see this area here. We can see Fisher's Peak State Park, Sugary Canyon State Park. A couple of years ago, we purchased this parcel right here on the Rib Rock along the top of Bartlet Mesa. That's mostly grassland, so I'll show you a picture on the next slide. And then the next year, we purchased this 1,400-acre parcel right there that basically goes from town and connects all the way up onto the Mesa to that other parcel. This is the, this is that first one, the Bartlet Mesa Ranch. It's on the top of the, it's on the top of the Mesa there. And really, you know, ecologically, this is a really interesting kind of high-elevation grassland. There's a lot of super intact ecosystems up on this area. And also through this acquisition, we were able to ensure that there would never be anybody that built a whole bunch of houses that look right down onto Sugary Canyon State Park. So really preserving, you know, you know, the economic, an economic driver for this area, which is, which we thought was pretty neat. This property, we transferred actually earlier this year to New Mexico Department of Game and Fish. So it'll be included with very minimal development, being some trails and hunting, I believe is in the plans, as in addition to Sugary Canyon. So the state park will grow by a couple thousand acres, which is neat. There shouldn't be any parking lots or anything up there is what we've been told, so. The more recent one was this, we purchased Lynwood Canyon all the way down from the Mesa down basically to town. We've been calling it the Buck Ridge Ranch. That's the name of it when we bought it. About 1,400, 1,430 acres. We purchased this in December of '23. And the goal is to transfer the property to the City of Raton for open space outdoor recreation platform. So to build upon what you guys have going with Climax Canyon and/or kind of, you know, kind of the Sugary Canyon State Park. So the whole premise here is between, behind Buck Ridge Ranch specifically is that the outdoor recreation industry is a way that a lot of rural communities across the United States, but especially in New Mexico, have been embracing to diversify their economies. There's a lot of tourism potential wrapped up in this. In 2023, outdoor recreation contributed more than $3.2 billion to New Mexico's GDP and supported 29,000 jobs. This next bullet point is state parks' specific data, just that we, that we heard come from there just a couple of weeks ago down in southern New Mexico at an economics summit. In 2024, economic activity associated with New Mexico State Parks supported five, more than 5,000 jobs, contributed 2.66, or $266 million to the state GDP. $511 million in revenue to businesses in New Mexico, 162 million in labor income, 40 million in state and local taxes here in New Mexico. This is an incredible, this represents an incredible growth opportunity because as of, I think it was 2023, Sugary Canyon State Park saw 125,000 visits, which is just an unbelievably massive amount of people. No surprise to you guys. I'm sure you see everybody kind of trying to figure out how to get over there through town. But yeah, so you're building upon this unbelievable base, base that you have here in that fantastic state park. So there's a few different ways that this can impact the economy here in Raton. First is to get visitors that are already in the area. 125,000 or 130,000 if you count current visitation for Fisher's Peak, which again is expected to go way up in the coming years. Get them to stay an extra day, right? So if you can add to another interesting place for them to spend some time, more hiking trails, things like that, on the Buck Ridge is, and Bartlet Mesa Ranch is kind of respectively, that might be enough to get them to spend an extra day. And daily visitor spending to state parks this past year was calculated at 60, just over $60 a person, which is, you know, that's great if you can get them to, or if you can get people to come for just, you know, an extra day. The next goal would be to capture the pass-through visitors. So there's a lot of people that drive, you know, pass-through here from Texas or from wherever they're going up into Colorado and up north. To the extent you can get them to stay an extra night, because you can kind of lure them in with recreational opportunities. There's a ton of money in that. There's a ton of economic potential there. And then the third is to encourage new visitors. So Fisher's Peak State Park specifically is leaning into this really heavily with biking. They are, they're building mountain bike-focused trail infrastructure on the property, which is a little bit of a different strategy than Sugary Canyon has taken to date. And so, you know, there's a lot of interesting ways to kind of, you know, figure out what the best path forward is to tie in if there's new demographics that you'd want to try and coax into Raton here through, again, those recreational infrastructure. Spending, spending for two-day visitors. So if you can get people to stay for longer, no surprise, you know, the impact expands exponentially. Capturing just 5% of visitors for an extra day is over 750,000 a year and increased economic activity for town here. So, and that's just based on these figures here. It's more hotel stays, more restaurant visits, more of everything. So, you know, we're into the planning process right now. We're in full fundraising mode. So there's, we're identifying sources of funds to help turn this into a reality. The goal is to have all of these funds, you know, originated at the state or federal level so they can truly be kind of an economic stimulus for the community here. So we're looking at that. The next step would be, you know, park build-out. Once we can kind of solve that initial acquisition funding, you know, problem that we're working towards, we can, we can do things like host community, you know, community meetings, maybe in this venue or others, to talk about what the vision for that property is, what would people like to see, what makes the most sense, and kind of evaluate some of those different options. And then move on to planning and more fundraising associated with that. It's not inexpensive to build out a state park type of facility. So, but there is, the good news is, is there's a tremendous amount of funding available at the state and federal levels for this type of, for this type of build-out. And then, you know, another thing that is actively on our minds is a potential partnership with the Mexico State Parks. Could this be folded up in, as in addition to Sugary Canyon State Park? That would be, that would probably be, that would simplify things from a management perspective, I'd say. I don't know if that's a possibility yet. When I talked to them last, they seemed like they would be open to that conversation. So, you know, there's, there's, you know, quite a bit to explore there. So we're early in the process. We are currently just trying to figure out how to, how to actually fund the transfer of this property to the City of Raton, who would be the owner of the property. We have some grant funding rounds that are coming up in the next month or two here that should help take care of quite a bit of it. And we're working on sources for the rest. But again, the goal is for that not to, not to come out of Raton's budget or anything like that. And I don't see any reason why we wouldn't be able to achieve that. So that's what I got here today. I'm happy to answer any questions or talk about. I could probably talk your ear off for hours and didn't know exactly how much time I, you all wanted me to. for hours and didn't know exactly how much time I, you all wanted me to dedicate to this. But yeah, again, happy to field questions if, if anybody's got any that are burnable.
Any questions?
Do you have any recommendations on the type of land that we have, what it would be most suitable for? I mean, would you lean into biking or hiking or what would, do you have any suggestions for us?
Yeah. So there's definitely a part of this that we'd want to commission some sort of, some sort of economic like impact analysis that would be more formally done. Anecdotally, through my, the way my brain works, I would love to come snag some of the visitors that are staying in Trinidad. And I think the best way to do that is to diversify into maybe select some more orientated trails. There's no reason, there's no reason that, you know, you couldn't be hiking and biking and, you know, there's, there's enough room on that property for everything while maintaining the ecological benefits that make that area special, which it is special. There are huge, huge oak trees on that property. Gambles Oak Way up high, it's neat. They're like more than 30 feet tall, blew my mind actually, and more deer than you can, than you can even imagine, which is no surprise to anybody in this room. But really quite something. Yeah.
At Fisher's Peak and around Lake Dorothy, there are seasonal closures in times where we're not able to go out and enjoy the park. Are there going to be similarities like that for this area as well?
I, I think that's just, so I, I think we need to look at the use a little bit better and how it ties into the management across the entire, the entire area, right? And you want to, there, there's a whole bodies of research on how, you know, fall use impacts elk, for example, right? And, and whether that makes sense based on the density of those animals in the area. These are all questions that we can absolutely answer and should, I think, help steer, you know, the development of a management plan. None of that has been designed at this point, I would say. There are also nesting raptors up along the cliffs there. There's this really neat rim rock that's like 40, 50 feet tall. Runs along the entire, the entire property. Yes?
While it's under the control of Nature Conservancy, is there any public access available to the Buck Ridge Ranch?
So there's not, which is all the more reason that we want to get a jump on and, and get this, get this transferred over so we can start having those. It's a, it all comes down to the line. To, to have public access on the property is just really challenging from, you know, somebody falls and breaks their leg. Presents some significant problems for our community.
It still has some active facilities arrangement on it at the moment, doesn't it?
So we did not do, we did not do another hunting lease this year. We did last year and, and just opted to not continue with that arrangement this year. I think our hope is that we can, you know, get the ball rolling on this and, and not have any leases in place. It's just a little bit of extra flexibility. We're also very open. We're into grazing. We did hunting last year. We haven't done grazing. We didn't do grazing last year, although there were quite a few cows that found their way onto the property, as to be expected, which is good actually, fuels reduction, fire mitigation. Grazing is also really good for ecological impact, so.
And the outbuildings that are on Buck Ridge Ranch, do they, will they stay or?
So they're, they're in rough shape and I think that's part of the kind of visioning process is do, what, what values do they add? I think the areas where there are structures, there's a yurt at the bottom and a, and a little house at the top. Those are probably logical places for, for some sort of visitor infrastructure potentially. It would require a renovation project. The structures are structurally sound, or at least they seem that way. They're just, they haven't been loved in a while. And so I think, you know, there's, there's definitely opportunities there depending on, again, how that, how that use is guided.
And Bartlett Mesa Ranch is completely out of the control of Nature Conservancy now?
That's correct.
Any, do you know if there's any ideas for that being public access as well in the near future?
Absolutely. So we transferred it to the Department of Fish and Game using Pittman Robertson funding, so sales tax from firearm sales, which generally goes hand in hand with limited infrastructure development. So think light trails, but not, no buildings and, and hunting access. So it is, so that piece, and my understanding is that they're, it's their intention to fold that into as a part of Sugaree Canyon.
Do you know, have they got any plans for the, the ranch that's up on the very top of it, the small cowboy house right on the top of Bartlett Mesa?
On the far end, yeah. Yeah, so I, I don't know what their plans are for that. There's a lot of asbestos associated with that particular structure. I mean, it's an old structure, right? It's true to the time, so, so I, I know, I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a quick question. So looking at this land and this property, in my mind, I think of Moab, Utah. And there were so much different, where they had your suspension bikes and different things to rent, and there were Jeeps that you could rent and go four-wheeling. Do you see any potential for this kind of property to be able to do that? I know you mentioned the bike trails, but can you, can you envision Raton being like a tourism hub where they provide these different infrastructures and businesses where people could come into our community and rent these items and then go enjoy the land?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. So putting on my Nature Conservancy hat, the, you know, we, we are an organization that is focused on ecological diversity and maintaining that biodiversity, that biodiversity on the lands that we're working, on which we're working. That being said, this is, this is kind of equally right there an economic development opportunity, I would say. So, you know, we have to see there, those two, those two different things, those two different kind of sides of the coin balance differently, depending on whether you're talking about hiking, biking, and then you progress to motorsports. It does change things. It's a large piece of property. The density suggests probably 15 to 20 miles of trails is, would be okay from a biking perspective. That's much lower with, with kind of, yeah, motorsports, I would say. So, so, you know, there's, there's a lot of conversation that needs to kind of happen around that. I'd say more likely, just given the organization for which I work, the passive recreation. So hiking, biking is more likely something that the data is going to suggest is kind of the appropriate use from our perspective, but that's, you know, again, I think these are all conversations that we need to have.
Thank you.
Laurie's line.
Go ahead. Go ahead. A bunch of rails for horse racing.
I think that would be fantastic. I, I, there's a lot of places where those, you know, they're multi-use trails potentially for, you know, non-motorized. Sports is, is kind of what I'm always having in my head. But again, we're early in the process and, you know, we saw this come on the market and we were like, okay, well, this is, this is kind of too good of an opportunity to pass up. So we jumped on it and now the hope is that we can, you know, lend the, you know, the ecological goals that my organization is known for, the Nature Conservancy is known for, with really a, you know, vision crafted by, by you all and the folks here in Raton that can, you know, kind of steer in the direction of the type of economic impact you guys are hoping to achieve.
Yeah, that's where I was headed, kind of what Danielle was talking about. I've been saying since Fisher Peak got going, Raton should be the southern interest to Fisher Peak. We should capitalize on that, catch the Texans as they, they've got to go through Raton to get to Colorado. So catch them and detour them here.
There is no doubt that is, that's what I'm rooting for. There, there are a tremendous amount of opportunities associated with marketing a, like a, you know, free park kind of complex here between Fisher's Peak, Sugaree, and then, you know, this maybe as an extension to Sugaree or maybe something else sold together, that I think, you know, the rising tide can lift all of this kind of a thing there. You know, if each has a slightly different niche, I think the goal, you know, if you can promote this as a, you know, as a place that is really, really enjoyable to come and recreate, you're gonna, I mean, it's just, again, it's an economic diversity play to say, okay, we have this, this, and this, which are the economic drivers of, of the community. You know, this is one of them, right? This sort of can be. And you guys are well on your way to kind of making those investments with Climax Canyon and some of the work that you guys have been doing up there. Gorgeous place, right? And, and investing in that capability within the city. So this is, this would be an extension of that potentially. Or it could also be a situation similar to Sugaree Canyon where the city owns the property and leases it to state parks to manage as a state park. I mean, that's a, that's probably an easier path to, to management. There's a lot that goes into it that state parks might be, might have a little bit more of a track record doing and it might just be simpler, but I think there's a lot of different ways it can go and we just have to see where, see where it takes us.
So do you have any data as to, because you'd mentioned earlier, the folks passing Most of the folks I see with Texas plates do not have a bicycle on the back of their pickup. They've got a $30,000 ATV side-by-side. We see what goes through to Red River through here, but it's almost like we're restricted because we want to keep everything passive. These folks gas up and go. They're not staying here overnight unless we give them a choice. To that point, I mean, the Colorado project is passive and it's going to stay that way pretty much, isn't it?
In Colorado?
Yes.
You know, I, I don't know the answer to that. I, I assume that that's probably as likely.
Well, because the other thing, Sugaree has a strong draw because they offer campsites.
Yeah.
But there, again, everything impact-wise on those trails is passive. And also the folks with the Texas plates don't have a reason to stop here unless we give them another venue. I'm just looking at kind of well- rounding out our options.
Yeah, and, and I think there's a couple of things on there. The parcel itself is, you just get a lot more, on a parcel of this size, you get a lot more bang for your buck with, with passive recreation because it just doesn't require as much space, if that makes sense. Vehicles are, they're big, right? And then again, you know, these are things that we need to look into and we need to have, we need to have conversations around. There, we'd have to, I think, coming from, you know, the Nature Conservancy's perspective, I think we'd have to really make sure that we're comfortable with the impact of more intense recreational kind of impact on, on what that might do for the areas wildlife. And, you know, it might turn out to, you know, it might turn out that the primary, what makes this special here is you go out there, there's a little lake up at the top and the number of birds that are there is just absolutely ridiculous.
Well, I'm just, I'm going to use Red River as the example. They do both well.
Yeah.
But being a rancher, 1,400 acres is little.
Right.
In my books, but to me, it allows for us to offer a variety that we don't have right now. So it, it's almost like we're tying our right hand behind our back. And all because, like I said, we're limiting who's going to stop and use this. And we're surrounded by thousands and thousands of acres that all have passive use only.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I mean, I don't have an answer for you and the goal at this particular time is not to shut out any, any possibilities, any opportunities. Again, there's just, you know, there's, yeah, I mean, I think, I think this is all, these are all things that we need to, we need to get in a room and talk about from a visioning perspective, right? And what's going to be the most, you know, what's going to be the most beneficial for the community and, and how that does interact with, with wildlife, because that is a, that is a consideration.
Because I'm tilting towards the economic impact.
Right.
Which would push harder, I think, in this particular case if Sugaree, what the state park or game and fish presently have remains as passive, what's in Colorado is passive, but we have another option.
Yeah, I mean, I think these are all just conversations that you need.
So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that we were, the city of Raton was part of the Bartlett Mesa acquisition as well. We had a $564,000 capital outlay request to close that funding gap. So we were part of getting that over to Game and Fish. So that, that's, we've been a part of all this from the, from the beginning and kind of got, kind of, I think we called it, when, after we saw what happened to Fisher's Peak, we kind of got a hold of the Nature Conservancy. It was like, hey, can you help us do that over here? And these guys just took off. I mean, they've been incredible and trust for public lands as well. But I was just wondering, Brad, as we look at developing this, are we looking at a, a small scale of kind of what happened in Colorado where we have like professional planning done so that we can really look and answer some of these different questions that we're probably looking at?
There seems to be quite a bit of funding here at the state level in New Mexico to, to help fund that type of, that type of analysis. So, so that would be, that would be the path that seems logical to me. I think, you know, in, in terms of, it all depends so much on fundraising, right? I mean, do you build, do you like, you know, do the development in one kind of phase or more like what Fisher's Peak has been doing, which is just over time, right? As the funding is available, so much of it is going to require, you know, a, you know, work of, like, you know, input of geologists and to see what, you know, trail building costs is wildly different from Fisher's Peak and Sugaree Canyon, for example. And it's super, it's really hyper-local in this volcanic, in this volcanic area about kind of what that, what those costs are going to look like. From the mineral assessments that we've had done when we were purchasing the property, I think this geologically is more similar to Sugaree Canyon, which is a good thing for a trail construction cost. Again, all of this is a little less, less of a consideration if we can, you know, if, you know, depending on the local state parks.
I'm hoping that as we start planning this, if it, if this place isn't good for motorized, which I don't think it will end up being just from partnerships, but that, I mean, my goal has always been to try to get an outdoor recreation master plan for our area and target something that can really address that mobilized vehicle recreation in our area. Because I think you're right, we're missing, we're missing some valuable economic dollars.
When we bought a, I mean, we bought a UTV from Hester's here last year for this ranch to get around the road during rough conditions. But I got, I had the pleasure of riding in the, in the truck. He dropped me off, helped me shuttle cars back and forth. And so I, I mean, I heard, I, I know that, that industry is, or that community here is, and there's probably not enough places around here to, to, you know, satisfy this desire. So again, I mean, these are needs and I think, Laurie, I think you're probably right on with the need for a recreation master plan, particularly given the amount of, you know, kind of, you know, especially with this particular, with this ranch in addition to Sugaree Canyon and Bartlett Mesa, I mean, you're getting Climax, the work you're doing in Canyon again. And I think that's probably a very worthwhile and, and fundable project.
Do you see the potential for some, even if it's primitive campsites, some campsites associated with some of this, these state parks? Right now, Sugaree through the summer is pretty much fully booked up. The people go on.
You know, I think you, you know, this, that's all part of the planning process. You know, campsites like that is not necessarily, you know, a terrible thing. It would make sense certainly down below perhaps. Up high, you run into problems where the road isn't necessarily great, right? And you don't want to, you don't want to have the negative impacts to the, to the folks that live up there, right? You want to kind of consider all, all the perspectives there. And again, part of that is just getting everybody in a room and kind of talking through it, right? But no, I don't, I don't think that that would, you know, I think that, that's a use that we would see as, you know, certainly one that we should talk about.
I just wanted to add to your discussion. I think, I think you're right, we need some ATV area, but I think that would be more useful over maybe at the Climax Canyon area or someplace further south. This area, I think, should stay pristine and passive. I mean, let's, there, there's a global search for these pristine areas and in, in this country, we have several, one of them being the Boundary Waters between Canada and northern Minnesota and Wisconsin, where you have to book out 18 months to get a reservation to go there. And I, I can, I can envision that that could be happening here. So I don't, I just wanted to like to say, let's not get too excited about, you know, let's keep it clean, keep one area motorized and a different area more. let's keep it clean, keep one area motorized and a different area more consistent.
I would also share too that I did a lot of backtracking in my twenties, and we've had some really high level conversations with the folks at Fisher, at Fisher's Peak and, you know, and some really, really, really high level conversations with the folks at New Mexico State Parks about this. But I think there's an opportunity for a nationally renowned trail that could leave, that could, you know, allow you to hike from Raton to Trinidad. I mean, can you imagine just, you go through all kinds of different environments, and that could be bikes, that could be on horseback, right? I mean, just the opportunities are incredible. It'd be like 30 something miles, I think, and could take a couple of days, and it just, that's the kind of thing that I personally would have sought out a long time ago. Less so now that I have two, well, maybe, maybe now that I have two young kids, right? Maybe now's the time. Get the little lakes grown a little bit more and, but.
There's still a lot of work to do.
Oh, yeah.
But this is a start.
I, you know, it's a part of it's just, you know, the first step is the hardest, and it's just kind of identifying the vision, and I think we've kind of looked at it, and I think we'd all like to see it happen hopefully, and certainly enough to start heading down the road and see what we can put together.
Yeah, well, thank you for your time and the presentation.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, let's move on. Item C, introduction of ordinance relating to the sale of public property within the city of Raton to BTU Block and Concrete. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, as we discussed earlier, we are moving items C and Q to be back to back on the agenda, and I would like to give some background information to the commission and to the citizens about what this is all about. Starting in 1985, BTU Block and Concrete Incorporated requested a series of variances and setbacks from the City of Raton Planning and Zoning Board. This accumulated in December 27, 1988, with the Raton City Commission approving a vacation of property beginning at the southern 154.8 feet of South First Street and the eastern 40 feet of South First Street from the southern boundary of Semeron Avenue north for approximately 671.84 feet. The motion was carried, and the city clerk and mayor were authorized to put forth a quit claim deed. This immediately created two problems. First, the city never issued a quit claim deed, and the transaction violated the State Anti-Donation Act. In consultation with our attorney and with an attorney from the municipal league, we have been advised that we have an obligation to rectify previous commission errors. The two items that we are bringing to you tonight do just that. The first item, the ordinance will solidify property ownership, and the second resolution authorizes the city to sell the property at fair market value to BTU Concrete, satisfying the anti-donation clause. So for item C, in your packet is an introduction of an ordinance concerning the sale of public property within the city of Raton to BTU Block and Concrete. The ordinance outlines the legal framework of the transaction, including property description, sale conditions, and compliance with applicable municipal and state statutes. This sale represents an opportunity to correct an error that incurred in 1988 where the city vacated the property in order to transition underutilized public property into productive private sector use, encouraging business growth and economic development. The city also aligns with the city's strategic efforts to support local industry partners. The city recommends your approval on this action.
All right, as Mr. Mestes stated, this is the introduction of the ordinance, so we are open for public comment, and we will then have a motion to introduce this ordinance. It is required that we have three public hearings or two, Michael. I believe it's three.
No, so you'll have the introduction this evening, and then the city clerk will publish a notice stating that we'll have a public hearing and then consideration probably at the second meeting in September, I would anticipate.
So three counting tonight, basically?
Yeah.
Okay. So this is just an introduction tonight. Any questions, comments from the commission? Entertaining motion.
I would like to introduce the ordinance relating to the sale of public property within the city of Raton to BTU Block and Concrete.
We have a motion in the second to introduce the ordinance relating to the sale of public property within the city of Raton to BTU Block and Concrete. Desiree, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Mayor Sigata?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Yes.
All righty, so the ordinance stands introduced. Moving to item Q, as we've moved it up now, it is deliberate enact on resolution 2025-52, authorizing the disposal of real property to BTU Block and Concrete. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is resolution 2025-52, authorizing the disposal of real property to BTU Block and Concrete. This resolution formalizes the process of transferring ownership and ensures compliance with applicable legal requirements. The disposal will allow the property to be utilized for productive purposes, contributing to local business growth and employment opportunity. And again, this satisfies the anti-donation clause that was violated back in 1988. The city does recommend your approval on this action.
Questions, comments?
I will move to approve resolution 2025-52, authorizing the disposal of real property to BTU Block and Concrete.
I have a motion in the second to adopt resolution 2025-52, authorizing the disposal of real property to BTU Block and Concrete. Any further discussion? Desiree, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Sigata?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. The resolution passes. All right, moving on. Item D, report. Explorer Raton by yearly report and updates by Patricia Grand, Director of Marketing and PR. Patricia.
I am here to give a six month update on our Explorer Raton, our website, our Google Ads, our social media, as well as our New Mexico True grants. To begin, I, there are two things. You have the biannual highlights, which is colorful, Raton branded. I will be going over that. And I think I said in last, in the last commission meeting, if you guys would like to bore yourself with my qualitative report, as well as my financial report, you can. So starting with our Google Ads and our website, back in October, we had a dip in our Google Ads grant. We were getting closer and closer to going below our 5% click through rate, which would jeopardize us losing the grant. And we were trying to figure out what was going on. We hired a Google Ads consultant in December, and a grant consultant, sat down with them, and what they discovered was that AI is taking over the internet. And so what's happening is there's a lot less clicks, a lot less traffic going through Google. So before, we used to have about 300 clicks to our website through our Google Ads grant, and now it's down to 50. However, with that being said, she did, we added some conversion tracking onto a lot of our webpages so that we can make sure to track all those, get less cost per click. And so we're kind of, we've been tweaking things daily, but we're now up to, per month, about 8% click through rate, before we used to be about 13. So you can kind of see how we're working on that. We're not in jeopardy anymore of losing the grant. We got that all hammered out when we met with the Google, the Google Grant Consultant. So we're doing good, we're slowly making some tweaks. We've made some, a few tweaks in the last month. Hopefully, we can get it up to 75, that's our goal. But that's what we have for right now, so you'll see that compared to last year, the last six months, the last update, that there has been a dip in what is reached per month on our Google Ads. But we still have the grant, we still get a free $10,000 to spend, our clicks are just about seven bucks per click now, as compared to $2. So there is that. In total, with our Google Ads reach, we reached 149,000 people. And then on our Wix reach, we, I pulled a bunch of the keywords that were showing up on Google, and through a bunch of different search engines, we reached 68,000 people separate from Google. So in total, we had a 217,000 people on our, that we reached through our website. You will see I've included a Google Ads screenshot of how much we've spent in the last six months, as well as our current click through rate. Like I said, that will change. We've been, you can kind of just see the little trends up and down, the color, that are color coded. We also, I also included some Wix from our hosting for our website. So you will see from about April to August 1st, that there is a huge uptick in traffic that is actually from our New Mexico True grant from this last year that ran this summer. And I'm actually just going to skip over to the New Mexico True since we're talking about that. So we had a digital ad campaign with New Mexico True through the grant that we received, and we had about 19,000 people per month click and go to our website. That's just not reached. So we had that, which was really, really great. This year, we applied in collaboration with Colfax County with, for the New Mexico True grant this year, which we received. So city paid 4,000, county paid 4,000. That campaign will not start until next summer, but we're working with them throughout the year to, New Mexico True, to do another videography digital ad. So we're anticipating the same exact results, but we're actually pushing our campaign from March to May before the tourism season. Social media, in total, we had 689,000 people on our social media reach, and that is all grown organically. About, last year, we had about 700,000 for Facebook alone and, including Instagram, and, but that was actually attributed to the New Mexico True grant when the social media influencers came and shared all that information. Okay, so moving on, I did include all of our New Mexico True directly from the reporting, our reporting folder online. And so we did have a half page ad that went into the New Mexico Magazine, started last November, that ran for about three months, there was 3,000 circulation on that. They also did an article and added some things of Raton in there, so that was really nice to see. And then I included a screenshot of the, this was from June, it says award summary, initiative opt-ins, how much we spent on, or how much New Mexico True spent on our digital ads that started this summer. So total impressions was almost 1 million, and that was in June. New Mexico True promised me approximately 3 million impressions people reached for the summer. So we kind of have it tentatively, you can kind of see the ads that we put, all the photos we used, screenshots that New Mexico True has provided with us. We do not have final results on those, the campaign just ended, so they're gathering all the information. So in total, if we put this all together for New Mexico True, that was 3.3 million people with the New Mexico True campaign grant from this summer. So in total, with just all of my work this year, it's about 2.2 million people that we reached, and then with New Mexico True's approximations, that's 3.3. So in total, this year, we're anticipating for this last fiscal year, 5.5 million people reached online. That is all that I have. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions?
I'm going to ask a question. People might, may or may not know this, but this is awesome, first of all, so exciting. Do you think the Google Ads grant will go on as it is with these new AI things, or do you think the grant might change?
We're training, and they're, they're just, they're doing-
Like rolling with it?
Yeah, they're trying to figure it out. We're changing some things up to try to get different clicks, maybe we need to, it's basically across the board.
Everybody's dealing with it.
Everyone's dealing with it. I know that, I went to the New Mexico True conference in January, and they did say the person who helped monetize ChatGPT moved back to Google. So I'm assuming they have some things up their sleeves, so, to make sure that Google is always at the forefront of AI. So that's, that's what I know, and I don't know what's happened since then, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Item E, deliberate enact on memorandum of understanding between the city of Raton and the city of Raton Continuum Advisory Board. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is a proposed memorandum of understanding between the city of Raton and the city of Raton Continuum Advisory Board. The MOU establishes cooperative roles, responsibility, and commitments for addressing community needs and providing advisory support to the city. By formalizing the agreement, both entities will improve coordination, strengthen communication, and ensure to share accountability for delivery. The purpose of this is to provide preventive and early intervention to the youth in Colfax and Union Counties through Core Cab and the city of Raton-approved programs in the Girls' Circle, Boys Council, and Restorative Judges. Yes, excuse me. The collaboration will enhance the city's capacity to address critical social and community issues. The city recommends your approval on this action.
Comments, questions for Mr. Mestes?
I'll make a motion to approve the MOU between the city of Raton and the city of Raton Continuum Advisory Board. I'll second.
A motion in the second to approve. Any further discussion?
It's a great program.
Yeah, it is a good program. All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, deliberate enact on children, youth, and families budget adjustment number one.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is budget adjustment number one for the children, youth, and families program. This adjustment reflects changes to the program funding streams and reallocations needed to support services more efficiently. Adjustments account for updated grants, operational expenses, and staffing resources necessary to provide the quality services. By adopting this adjustment, the city ensures that the program remains financially stable and continues to meet its mission. The city recommends your approval for this action.
And it looks like they're just moving line item. Numbers there.
One to the one another.
Travel down to the youth committee members.
Yes, our coordinator's here this evening. Can you, when I just-
Sure. So it's just really simple. The travel line item really isn't necessary because we can do everything through Zoom, and my intention this year is to attend all meetings through Zoom, and we had a coordinator meeting discussing this, as this was kind of the overall approach from all the coordinators. And they shared with our boards growing, they're excited to support it, and it would be beneficial to move our travel monies, so we're not reverting any funding, and the youth can benefit from it.
Cool.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
I will move to approve the act on children, family, budget adjustment number, children, even families budget adjustment number one.
Second.
Motion in the second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, deliberate enact on the city of Raton Personnel Board. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is a recommendation for an appointment of Leader Bernal to the city of Raton Personnel Board. This appointment will fill a current vacancy and is essential to maintain full representation on the board. The Personnel Board provides oversight on employment policies, grievance procedures, and employee relations, making this role an important part of the city's organizational structure. Ensuring a complete and effective board helps your city continue to fare and consistent personnel practices. The city recommends your approval on this action.
Any questions, comments? I think this is a good choice.
I will move to approve the appointment of Leader Bernal to the Raton Personnel Board. Sorry.
A motion in the second to appoint. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, welcome aboard. Item H, deliberate enact on Lodger's Tax Advisory Board recommendations, and we have two of them, Gate City Music Festival by Raton Main Street and Media Management and Explorer Raton Management by Center for Community Innovation. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet are recommendations from the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board for tourism promotion and support. The first one, the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board is recommending to the city commission that $20,080 be awarded to the Raton Main Street for the 10th Annual Gate City Music Festival for radio, ads, t-shirts, sanitation, hospitality, security, insurance, outdoor entertainment, outdoor sound, and Will and Crystal Yates, $1,400 from radio ads, and $18,680 for annual events fund. Did you want to do these separately or together?
I think we can do them together.
Mayor and Commissioner, the second recommendation, the, from the advisory board, is that $40,000 be awarded to the Center for Community Innovation for Google Ads Management and the Media Management- for Google Ads Management and the Media Management, thirty thousand from the Explore Raton Management, and ten thousand from Media Management. These projects play a key role in boosting Raton's visibility and economic vitality. Uh, each request was evaluated for its potential to attract visitors and increase overnight stays, thereby generating additional revenue. The city recommends your approval on both these actions.
We have two recommendations up from Lodger's Tax Board. Is there any questions?
I will move to approve both recommendations from the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board.
Second.
A motion is second to approve both. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item I, deliberate and act on event form for the Raton High School Homecoming Parade on September sixth, two thousand twenty-five. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is the event form from the Raton High School Homecoming Parade scheduled for September twen- September sixth?
September sixth.
September sixth, sorry. The form includes details for road closures, staging areas, and safety coordination with city police and fire departments. This annual event is a valued community tradition, providing school spirit, family participation, and community pride. Inside, you have the layout, and you have the insurance, uh, required insurance form. Approving of this request will ensure city support for a safe and successful execution of the parade. The city recommends your approval on this action.
Comments, questions?
I'd like a motion-
Go ahead.
A motion to approve the event form for the Raton High School Homecoming Parade.
A motion is second to approve. Any other comments? I would just say September sixth, it really doesn't feel like football weather, but we'll go for it.
Well, I was misreading that myself.
Yeah. Any other discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item J, deliberate and act on service authorization from Engineering Analytics for the South Second Street Rehabilitation Project. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is the service authorization from Engineering Analytics for the South Second Street Rehabilitation Project. Um, the project termini are from Herbert Avenue intersection to the Francis Avenue intersection, which is approximately two point eight miles long. Uh, this authorization includes engineering design surveying, construction management services necessary to advance the project. Rehabilitation of South Second Street is a key infrastructure improvement effort addressing roadway deterioration and improved traffic safety. The, um, total amount estimate is a hundred and eight thousand. Uh, partnering with Engineering Analytics ensures technical experience and oversight through the project's life cycle. The city recommends your approval on this action.
Authorization of Engineering Analytics for the South Second Street Rehabilitation Project.
Second.
A motion is second to approve. Is there any questions, comments, discussion?
This is funded through DOT.
Uh, this is DOT, correct?
Uh, yes, it's funded through RTPF, Project Funds, and it's last been allocated in the application. Any other questions, comments? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item K, deliberate and act on the purchase of cold mix asphalt from Northern Mountain Construction utilizing the state price agreement, number five zero eight zero five zero zero two four dash one seven one one. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is a request to purchase cold mix asphalt from Northern Mountain Construction under state price agreement number five zero dash eight zero five zero zero dash two four dash one seven one one. The estimated of this cost is thirty-four thousand five hundred plus applicable, uh, NMDRT. Um, the city would use, utilize gas tax funding to cover approximately twenty-eight hundred in tax plus to be a determined, determined amount for transporting the cold mix. Trucking is estimated to be less than five thousand. Utilizing this price agreement ensures the city receives materials at a competitive state-approved rate while also streamlining procurement. Cold mix asphalt is essential for addressing potholes, patching, and road maintenance across the city. This purchase will allow public works to continue maintaining safe and reliable streets for residents and visitors. The city recommends your approval on this action.
Questions or comments?
Motion to approve the purchase of cold mix asphalt from Northern Mountain Construction utilizing the state price agreement.
A motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item L, deliberate and act on resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty concerning a dangerous building or premises and requiring removal located at fourteen sixty-six South Second Street. Mr. Mestes.
Uh, Mayor and Commission, in your packet is resolution twenty zero twenty twenty-five dash five zero concerning a dangerous building located at fourteen sixty-six South Second Street, uh, which is Schwedt's, I'm sure you all know.
Schwedt's.
Schwedt's. Sorry. Uh, this, uh, structure has been identified as unsafe due to code violations and hazardous conditions that pose risks to public health and safety. The resolution calls for the removal or remediation of the building in compliance with city ordinances. Prompt action will help eliminate potential liabilities and improve neighborhood safety. The city recommends approval on this action.
Questions, comments? The owner's okay with this?
Yes.
I spoke to Mrs. Schwedt yesterday. Um, she had plans to demolish it. She, COVID happened, things, things happened, and so she wasn't able to get around to it. But when I called her yesterday, she seemed very open to the idea. She agreed, uh, and so she asked for a list of contractors. So I'm gonna provide those for her. Good night.
Yeah, had a conversation with her as well.
I'll move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five fifty concerning a dangerous building or premises and requiring removal located at one four six six South Second Street.
A motion is second to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty. Further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item M, deliberate and act on resolution twenty twenty-five fifty-one concerning a dangerous building or premises and requiring removal located at three twenty-three Lopez Street. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is resolution twenty twenty-five dash five one regarding a dangerous building located at three twenty-three Lopez Street. I'm sure you all remember a few weeks ago, uh, this building was heavily damaged in a fire. Um, it's right over here on the east side. The property has been deemed uninhabitable due to structural deficiencies and safety concerns. This resolution directs the removal of unsafe structure, ensuring compliance with local safety and building regulations. Removal will support community health and the revitalization of the neighborhood. The city recommends your approval on this action.
Questions, comments?
I will move to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty-one concerning a dangerous building or premises requiring removal located at three twenty-three Lopez Street.
Motion is second to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty-one. Further discussion?
Just curious, uh, if there's been contact with the owner as well on this property?
Yes, I spoke to him yesterday as well. He agrees. Um, his brother owns a construction business, so he's going to get a roll-off soon and begin cleaning it up. But it's slow going.
Any other questions? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item M, deliberate and act on recommend- recommendation of award for the Kearney Film School Phase One A Construction Contract. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is a recommendation of award for the Kearney Film School Phase One A Construction Contract. This contract represents the first step in developing educational and workforce infrastructure that will support the film industry and the creative economy here in Raton. The Kearney Film Project is supported by approximately six point one million in combined funding from HU, CPF, EDA, and State Capitol Alley. V Hill and Associates was engaged, V Hill and Associates was engaged as a project architect in late twenty twenty-three. Seal bids were solicited and publicly opened at two P M. on February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. The sole base bid received from Brinkon Construction Company in the amount of seven million, seven hundred twenty-three thousand, two hundred and thirteen thousand, excluding New Mexico GRT, exceeded available funding, and so it could not be awarded. We broke this down into, uh, Phase One A and One B, and Franken has submitted a proposal for Phase One A in the amount of two million, one hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and six dollars plus tax totaling two million, two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars, while above the city's target range for the sub-phase construction. This contract allows essential work to proceed, establishes a viable path towards occupancy, and retains a qualified contractor in a challenging bid environment. Awarding this contract will allow construction activities to begin generating jobs and stimulating economic investment. The project also aligns with the city's goal of expanding cultural and vocational opportunities for residents. The city recommends your approval on this action.
Questions, comments?
Is there a warranty being offered on the roof repairs?
Uh, I'm sorry.
The roof repairs, is there a warranty being offered by the contractor on this?
Item-
Mayor and Commission, uh, so the roof repairs for Kearney are gonna be very minimal. Um, and so it'll be limited to, you know, new penetrations and, um, there might be, they'll, they'll do an evaluation. And any work that they perform would become covered under the warranty, warranty, uh, requirements and the terms and conditions of the contract. We're using a standard AIA, uh, contract that is very similar to what we went out to bid with.
Well, because it's eighty thousand dollars broken it up.
I believe that line included some demolition of some evaporative coolers on the roof that would have to then be patched, or evaporative coolers, is that right?
Swamp coolers?
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions?
I would move to approve recommendation of the award for the Kearney School Film Group. They use One A Construction Contract.
Second.
A motion is second to approve. Any further discussion?
Um, this dollar amount, how does it match up with the grant lengths that we've received?
Uh, it will consume approximately, a little less than half of what we have remaining, uh, of grant funding. And, um, that however, does include what we had allocated towards equipment. Uh, it would leave approximately eight hundred and fifty thousand of our original MAC, Maxible Allowed Construction Cost, which is less than we, um, anticipate needing for Phase One B.
So how much, once this is completed, how close are we to then opening doors and rolling students?
This scope, Phase One A, was crafted in such a way that at the end of it, um, we would be eligible to apply for our occupancy, uh, certificate of occupancy.
Um, one other question, though, since the electrical was excluded, is that meter base been switched out for a smart meter? Or are you guys gonna go with it?
That's a good question. That's something that we'll address, um, in the course of, it still has power to it. I, I would only be assuming that it's already been swapped out.
Well, they're not gonna turn it off till Christmas.
What's that?
I mean, these-
Little A base?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. It does not have an A base meter.
I think, I think it's been switched. I can't be positive, Mark.
Okay. Their name wasn't on the wanted list.
Not that I'm aware of, no. I didn't see it on the wanted list, no.
All right. That's the last question I got.
Can I just clarify something? When we talk about certificate of occupancy, there's not gonna be the equipment in there. We cannot, it's like, we could go in there and start fixing it up because they aren't even gonna be fixing the floors, you know? So we can get in there and start doing stuff, yes, but we're not gonna, the project will not be launched at that end of this.
And that's the question I'm pushing is, is this a wise move? You've been spinning this if we're nowhere closer to getting the doors open?
Well, it is closer, absolutely. I'm just saying at the end of this six, eight months or whatever it ends up being, it's not like, you know, we could have like some minimal classes. We can move some of the equipment that we bought already in there, but this will not be the studio equipment. The studio is not even included in this construction, so the gym will not be touched in this renovation.
So is there, there's still funding available for that equipment?
Yes, it's been eaten in too, but-
This thing here, I don't see a whole picture. I wanna know the whole numbers. How close are we to being done with this? We need to have something towards a success in this thing.
It, it is towards a success. I mean, we can get into the building and start because there's not enough money. We're gonna have to start doing, like, you know, we're gonna have to put flooring in ourselves and paint walls and, and things like that.
Phase One A has minimal finishes. It's predominantly focused on structural stabilization, site grading and drainage, and envelope repairs, as well as, uh, two bathroom, complete renovation of two bathrooms.
So how much are we sure to get that thing fully equipped?
Whatever the inflation rate is. I mean, inflation has been killing us. And, uh, I mean, we had a meeting with the contractor just the other day. You know, getting a subcontractor for the contractor, they're coming out of Albuquerque. You know, we couldn't get anybody local. Um, it seems like everybody's gonna be devoted to this two major school projects that are going on. So it's really hard, uh, to get these folks, uh, on board, and it's just kind of snowballing. But, um, it's been my direction to the city engineer that we gotta keep going. We gotta keep this ball rolling.
Well, I mean, you've had questions from downstate as to where we're at with this. So I mean, that's, people are watching, it's a fact.
And I think the best strategy is for us to keep moving. As expensive as it is, we'll continue to chase money, and we'll continue to go after whether it's grant money or something else, but, or, um, even through El Raton Media Works School after private money. But, um, going back and, you know, trying to get a better bid or anything like that, I think that's counterproductive because now we're delaying and delaying and delaying.
Well, no, I'm not asking that. I'm just asking, we, we don't see the whole picture money-wise as to this is what we got, this is what this is, how much is left? We need to be able to do this and that.
The original schedule of values of what we intend Phase A and Phase B to be was provided to us at just pretty much exactly four million dollars. And all likelihood, it'll be just above four million dollars, everything said and done, which then leaves, I don't know, around a million dollars for equipment at that point.
Is that sufficient? How far short?
I mean, it also depends on what the economy's doing at that time. I mean, right now, I would say at least a million. Um, but it's just, it's so hard to know, like, how things are gonna change. I mean, especially with technology, the LED wall, there's newer, better technology that's come out. It should be cheaper, but because of how things are and tariffs, like, it's just, like, hard to know. I mean, we've repriced those so many times over the last four years now, so. Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's either we keep going forward because it's gonna get more, seems like it's gonna keep getting more expensive. It's gonna be never or very long time before it goes bad, prices start falling again. So let's either go forward now or just stop altogether.
Yeah, it's like, keep telling my providers, you know, they keep saying, price of food was up eighteen percent in July, over the last, I said, it's gonna get better.
Win. Yeah. Win. And unfortunately, we're stuck in that cycle.
Well, I mean, there's a price for slow rolling. Four years for a project like this, that shouldn't have happened, but it has.
Is there, can you, Phase 1B, what does that look like?
It's predominantly focused on the XR studio.
Okay.
And the, the server room and the control room and the XR classroom. And it includes bringing in a completely new HVAC system to the gymnasium, so you have a nicely conditioned space. It includes bringing in the three-phase electrical, soundproofing, like, some finishes as well.
And then the equipment on top of that, is that what we're saying, or that's?
And then, yeah, the equipment can be incorporated whenever it makes sense. We'll coordinate that with El Raton Media Works.
Yes.
Yeah, I think from a lead agreement perspective, what's important here is that it seems that everyone's doing what they can to keep the project rolling. And the expectations that are on our partners, our city partners, we have to rethink in terms of how much money is actually left for them to use for the technology that was really the basis for their entire strategy. So, their strategy centered on a volumetric studio. The, the costs of construction are really pinching that technology budget in the extreme. And I think as, as a city, it's important for us to, to consider what is fair under the circumstances in terms of the economic lift they're able to create with the remaining funds.
And I want to be clear, no one's slow-rolled anything. This has been a long process with a lot of setbacks. No one anticipated getting an $8 million bid. And, and so every time something like that happens, it's a major setback. We had major historical preservation hoops to jump through, major environmental hoops to jump through, not to mention demonstrating clear title of ownership to the funding agencies before they'll release funds. So, no one's been slow-rolling anything.
In the public situation, it's a slow roll because of those hoops. You know? So, that's why I'm having a hard time getting my head wrapped around this.
I mean, it feels like a very slow roll, especially, I mean, for us who've been waiting. But, yeah, it's like.
How long do we hold our breath?
Yeah. But I think from a government point of view, it's probably about par for the course, but it definitely feels like a very, like, XR technology, I mean, that was a revolutionary four years ago. It's still big now, but it's, everyone's, they're, they're big ones are putting, you know, there's, there wasn't any in Texas, there wasn't any nearby, and there wasn't in Albuquerque. Now, other people are getting them, so we lost the movers' edge on that, for sure. But no one's still doing an educational facility based around that technology and not doing it in rural America, so that, that we still have so far cornered the market.
And we got to remember when this kicked off, we were coming out at the end of it.
Yeah.
You know? And that did not help the cost of things, and it still isn't, so.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? I believe we had a motion and a second somewhere in there yesterday.
We did.
And does, can we have a vote, please? Roll call from this one, please.
Mayor Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. All right. Back to item O now, deliberate and act on out-of-state travel for the 2025 Ports to Plains Alliance Conference for Commissioner Lindy Schuster. Mr. Mestes. Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is a request for out-of-state travel authorization for Commissioner Lindy Schuster to attend the 2025 Ports to Plains Alliance Conference. This conference provides networking policy updates and advocacy opportunities focused on transportation and economic corridors that directly impact Raton. The total estimate for this trip will be $408.30. Participation will strengthen the city's regional presence for efforts and secure infrastructure investments. The city recommends your approval on this action, and this will come out of commission travel. Questions, comments?
I will be abstaining from this vote. I just want to say, when I first got the invitation, I, I did contact Tina Scarborough from Ports to Plains, and, and it does appear that the main purpose of inviting additional people to the conference is simply to basically provide support to Mayor Protem and her efforts and give her a second, you know, other points of contact for, for the group. So, that's why I went ahead and accepted the offer. But I'll abstain from the vote.
Any other questions, comments?
I thought it was going to be a lot more, and I wasn't sure we needed two of us going, but after looking at this, I mean, it looks like there's one night lodging and a city vehicle potentially. So, I mean, I think this is a bargain, actually, at $408. I was very surprised.
They're basically waiving the, the fee, the conference fee.
Any other comments?
Yeah, when you're at these meetings, like herding cows, how do you make yourself larger?
What do you mean?
I mean, you know, like, where it makes it look like there's more of you there.
We have a really strong presence on that board because there's not that many of us on the board, and so they, I mean, they know Raton, we're a big, for being a really small town, we're a very big player because there's only us and Clayton from New Mexico. So, they know myself, and then Kobe Beckner from Clayton is the mayor Protem there, and he attends all these things as well. And especially because we both attend the DC fly-ins, so we're very well-known on the, on the board.
Okay.
So, it'll be good to have more representation.
Motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the out-of-state travel for the 2025 Ports to Plain Alliance, Alliance Conference for Commissioner Lindy Schuster.
A motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye? Close? Excuse me, motion carries. Item P, City Treasury Report, Acknowledgement of Fiscal Year 2026 Final Budget Approval from the Department of Finance and Administration for the City of Raton, Raton Waterworks and Raton Public Service. And I see Michael Ann coming up, but Mr. Mestes, is there anything you'd like? Mayor and Commissioner, I yield the floor to the City Chief of Staff.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. In your packet is our letter approving our fiscal year 26 budget. This is from Department of Finance and Administration, the Local Government Division. You will see included in the letter that it is a requirement that we make this a part of the minutes, and so that's why it's a report and it's not an action item by the commission. You know, there are some conditions that must be met in order to have our budget approved, and one of those is compliance, having an audit for FY '24 submitted. And so, this year, we did have a timely audit, and we met that requirement. Also, they do put language in here that now that the budget has been approved, all budget increases and transfers would need to be done via resolution like we normally do, and you'll see the next item on the agenda is budget adjustment, or I guess after my financial report. So, typically, from the time we submit the budget to the time it's approved, we've had some changes already occur. So, we did anticipate that Raton Waterworks and RPS would have their budgets approved by now. Geneva did reach out to DFA, and evidently, they have a different analyst than I do, and they had been out of medical leave. So, there's a little bit of a last-minute scramble to get, because they're considered a special district. So, hopefully, they will have theirs approved here soon, and then I'll bring those back to you probably at the next meeting.
Thank you for the report. Item R, deliberate and act on Resolution 2025-53, July 2025 Financial Report.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet this evening, we do bring to you our financial summary as of July 31st. You will see that our ending cash balance in the general fund was just over $5 million, less our 1/12 reserve and the funds invested in the one-year CD. That leaves you with available cash of $3,429,765. I've also detailed out for you the balances in our remaining funds. I am excited to report that we had a really good gross receipts tax check this month. It would be reflective of the June business activity. Not real sure, I think we had some limited construction occurring in May and June. So, I can't say that it's really attributed probably to the Maverick, but I am optimistic that hopefully in the coming months, at least through probably November, that we would have a really good GRT. So, this distribution was $621,060, and if you look at last year's, August was $507,000 and the prior year, $538,000. So, hopefully, there's not a correction on the horizon, but you never know sometimes with Tax and Rev.
Looking at this, we sure they didn't put some of our gas tax in there?
I know. Yeah, possibly. That was, the other item I was going to mention is that I did include your comparison reports. You will see on the gas tax, this was probably the lowest distribution that I've ever seen, and definitely in the last five years, it was $9,084. Now, last month was, was pretty normal, and so we were excited that there had been a little bit of an uptick. So, I don't know if there's some sort of a correction going on there with possible reporting. They still have not responded to me, even though I brought this to the attention several months ago. So, my intention is to reach out to our Tax and Rev liaison again and say, now we're really concerned because this was extremely low. So, lodgers tax, I think we, July was a pretty good month. It was down about $1,800 compared to the previous month, but I think we should be on track, especially, you know, with some exciting events, Gate City for this month, the motocross in September. So, I think that'll certainly help our lodgers tax. And then on the cannabis, that return was a little bit higher as well, but the previous month was really low, so I'm suspecting some late reporting on cannabis. But as far as starting the new fiscal year, you know, we're off to a good start. We are making preparations with our new audit firm, Carvigs and Ingram's, so we'll be setting some dates to do onsite work for the FY '25 audit. And then we have to officially close out the fiscal year in our accounting system no later than September 30th, so we'll be kind of working on that process in the next few weeks. May stand for any questions?
Any questions for Michael Ann? Comments?
If you listen to the radio in the morning, ARDN is reporting the gas prices in the region.
Oh, really? Okay.
Is that embarrassing what Raton was that?
Yeah. Well, we suspect, you know, and I've kind of relayed that information to Tax and Rev that, you know, in relation to surrounding communities, our gas prices have been slightly higher, which, you know, people just aren't stopping. But I would be interested to know, if they're not stopping for gas, they might not be stopping for the hamburger and the fast food. So, I don't know what's, if the other businesses are seeing an impact. That would be a concern that I have. You know, hopefully, once the Maverick opens, things might change. But I did alert Tax and Rev, the only changes we've had, no closures of any stations, but there has been ownership changes in some of the stations. So, I just want to make sure. They probably won't share individual business information with me, but hopefully, they can look into that more on their side and just make sure that the reporting is correct. There's not an issue there. So, hopefully, I can report back to you here soon if I get a response.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-23, July 25, January 23.
Motion and two seconds. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries. Item S, deliberate and act on Resolution 2025-54, Fiscal Year 26 Budget Adjustment Number One. Michael Ann.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is our budget adjustment number one. You'll see that, first of all, the $9, that was an error that I found when I was closing out the fiscal year. I had done a transfer to reimburse, some temporary transfers that we made earlier in the year for the purchase of some public works equipment that was legislative capital outlay. Evidently transposed the numbers, and I was short $9 in reimbursing the general fund. So, with this approval this evening, I will put the $9 towards the general fund to correct that error. Other than that, as the Kearney School Project is moving forward, we still have some architectural expenses, and so we'll be doing some temporary transfers. We did do our first HUD reimbursement recently, and so with the project moving forward, we can keep doing those drawdowns. We are working on the EDA reimbursement next. So, each funding agency kind of has a different process. And then also, I had excluded from the budget $6,502. That was a temporary transfer that we made at the end of the fiscal year for the juvenile justice program, so we need to show that repayment in the budget to the general fund. And I have already received those funds from the state, so that'll be happening here soon. Another thing, we had some projects that didn't finish by the end of the fiscal year, the Welcome Center HVAC being one of those. I didn't rebudget for it, so I'm putting the $58,000 back into the budget, and so I'm not sure, have they worked on your building already? So, have not received the final invoice on that. I know they've done some work on City Hall recently, so that will come out of this year's budget as well. The library recently reported that we received the Big Read Grant, I think you approved, or at least they did report that we received that. The match is in kind, so it'll just be the $12,170 for that grant. J-Jack Grant, I needed to include the Learning Lab Grant Agreement. That was kind of approved later in the fiscal year, so I'm adding the $59,400 for that, and then the adjustment you approved earlier this evening for the transfer of the $1,500. Other than that, solid waste. We are receiving a clean and beautiful grant for the purchase of trash cans. Jason did inform me that that does have a match component, and so we would need to budget $3,027 to come out of reserves to cover the match.
Any questions, comments for Michael Ann? Pretty straightforward.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-54, Fiscal Year 26 Budget Adjustment Number One.
Yeah, motion and second to adopt Resolution 2025-54, Budget Adjustment Number One. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries. Item T, City Managers' Report. Mr. Mestes. Mayor and Commissioner, bottom line up front, today is the filing day for the November elections, and I would like to encourage each candidate to set up an appointment with me, either individually or collectively, to receive a thorough briefing on everything that's going on in the city. Just so you know, the candidates, we have incumbent Don Giacomo will be running against Dan Campbell and Jason Bennett. We have Mayor Neil Sagata, who will be running against Joe Bustos and Sally Hogar, and we will have Lindy Schuster, who will be running against Jeff McLean and Kathleen Hansen. Again, I encourage all candidates to come meet with me to kind of find out what's going on in the city. Mentions and dispatches, shout out to the Raton Fire Department and the dispatch team for their response to a waterline break here in City Hall late Friday night. I was in San Antonio, and I got a call at about 11 o'clock. The team spent into the late hours. The team spent into the late hours cleaning water, ensuring that there was no damage to our facility. The treasurer is preparing for the upcoming audit. Public work city crews have focused on providing some landscaping maintenance on high-visibility city-owned properties, patching problematic streets damaged by the recent rains, and preparing the street area for the upcoming Gate City musical. The police are preparing for the Gate City musical, the fire preparing for homecoming. Engineering has taken over the duties of animal control and are aligning with the zoning department, and I don't know if you've noticed or not, but we have been getting some buildings torn down and other properties cleaned, and, you know, another shout-out to our city engineer. Facilities, repairs are being made to the aquatic center in City Hall. The clerk has a new stamp that must be used in order to post on city property. So, if you want to post any sort of notice, please city clerk, and she will stamp it with her approval. Economic Development, our Director of Economic Development, Cynthia Laura Molina, and Tyce and Jayden Welch are planning and zoning experts, compile property info for corporate site selection, relocation, and expansion executives. And finally, closing thoughts, I was looking for an appropriate quote for today's filing for elections, and I found this. I'm going to paraphrase it by PJ O'Rourke. "Everybody will win an election when all the seats in the House, Senate, and behind the desk in the Oval Office, and the whole bench of the Supreme Court are filled with people who wish they weren't there." That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Honeyfield, any further comments?
I do. What exactly is engineering doing with animal control?
We're aligning it with code enforcement, and because a lot of these things kind of are similar, and in order to make sure that, you know, we are making sure that people are getting fined and paying the fines and stuff like that, it's tying in. So, we're using a model that Edgewood, New Mexico, is using.
Rui Doso.
I'm sorry, Rui Doso is using, and they've seemed to be very effective in aligning code enforcement and animal control. There'll still be some involvement by the police, especially when it comes to training, but we're trying to tackle major problems, especially as we start developing new construction projects with the quarantine area and the new shelter that the engineer is going to be developing anyway, and his team's going to be involved. So, we thought this was a nice marriage to kind of start bringing that together.
And engineering oversees code enforcement. Well, I understood that part, that just, that'll control.
I had the same question.
Little bit of a stretch there.
He was egging out there chasing dogs. It's like, you go home at night, or?
He needs more to do. Haven't you talked to him?
I've been talking to him about that, and we're working our best to keep him gainfully employed.
All right, that's all.
Commissioner Giacomo, any question, any comments? Commissioner Schuster, any comments?
I just wanted, for anybody who didn't know, the Dolly Parton meeting for the books that are, that her program for giving out books is always going to be this Thursday, but she has an inner ear infection, so that program is canceled, but will be rescheduled.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem.
Go Tigers! We got homecoming coming up.
That's right.
Seems early, but we're ready.
We're ready. I have no comments, other than this meeting is adjourned.